All right, we're gonna call to order a Board of Supervisors work session. Today is Thursday, December 4th. We're in the Supervisors hearing room on Melody Lane in Bisbee, Arizona. Order a deletion of any item on this agenda as subject to modification at the meeting, and any item listed is open for discussion. Please note that some attachments may be uploaded after the agenda is published, meaning presentation materials displayed at the Board meeting may differ slightly from the attached versions. Members of the Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by remote conferencing. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform, or visitors, guests, to inform and discuss the agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with roll call District 1.
Mr. Chair, Crosby is here, and thank you. Good morning, distinguished guests.
All right, District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3, Antoniore is here. All Supervisors are present, and Mr. Crosby tending remotely. We'll begin with introductions. I'll hand it out to our guests today, who probably needs no introduction, but go ahead and introduce yourself.
Ken Bennett, I'm a native Arizonan, born in Tucson, and reside in Prescott. Served on the City Council back in the 80s, State Board of Education in the 90s, the Legislature in the 2000s, and Secretary of State '09 to '15. I also have John Breaky with the Audit USA organization that I'm the Chair of the Board. Obviously, when I became Secretary of State in 2009, I began working with election officials all over the state, and it has become a passion of mine. And I enjoyed the six years I was Secretary, working with counties, you know, bipartisan, and even across the country, working with election officials. And so been very concerned about how we can restore trust in elections. And have a presentation, we can probably jump right into that. But my background, yeah, I became Secretary of State in '09, and sure enough, in 2010, we had to have the first statewide recount of a statewide election. Two million ballots cast statewide, and one of the propositions on the ballot was losing by 126 votes, first time in the history of the state. It triggered the statute at that time, which said you have to have a recount if it's 200 or less. So I had to oversee, along with the 15 county officials, the first recount of the statewide election in the history of the state of Arizona. And so that's kind of played in very much to my mindset, I guess, on elections. But I've also tried to be open-minded. How can we do elections better? And I've watched kind of the dilemma that we'll talk about when we get into the presentation. And we have a, I've come up with an idea, or our organizations come up with a way to verify elections, so that you, as the election officials and the folks that certify elections, can feel totally confident that the results you certify, or canvas, as we call it in Arizona, are accurate.
Also want, I also want to mention that we have our Stephen County Recorder here, Mr. Billy Cloud, and our Elections Director, Melissa Avant, for the folks that are watching online. Of course, Dylan, our County Attorney, is here as well, Dylan Handel. Yeah, Paul just showed up. Oh, Paul's back there, okay. Paul Crea is our Chief Civil Deputy. Okay, so anyways, go ahead, you have a question.
Question for the people who are listening.
Sure.
Your organization is bipartisan, right?
Audit USA?
Yes. Can you just tell a little bit about what the organization is, and who makes it, makes up?
Audit USA was started about 20-plus years ago in Tucson, John Breaky, and I think it fell by the name of Jim Marsh back then. There were citizens in Pima County concerned about a regional transportation authorization, authority election, the RTA election, a couple billion dollars, if I remember correctly. And there was concern about how that election was conducted. And so they began to, for lack of a better word, scrutinize how the election process had worked. And I think it turned into an eight- or nine-year thing that led to Pima County establishing an Election Integrity Commission. It led to changes in procedures as far as how citizens were allowed to observe elections, where the wires went from computer to computer, that those were all open and disclosed, and you could see stuff, instead of stuff hidden in the walls, and on and on and on. So that just kind of began an organization that was citizen-driven to kind of scrutinize elections and make sure that citizens had the level of transparency that I think they need to have confidence in their elections.
And totally bipartisan, you have Democrats and Republicans.
Bipartisan, and also throughout the country. We've got folks from New York, Tennessee, Florida, California, North Carolina, yeah. And so, now, I've just come onto the Board within the last year, but I guess, given my background, they asked me to be the Chair of the Board. So this is not something I started, and I'm a very, very recent addition to the Board, but I'm honored to be part of a group of citizens across the state and in the country that are trying to make our elections more transparent, trackable, and publicly verified.
And that's the goal here, that we're trying to do in Cochise County, is just expand the transparency of the process, the way we do it. And Melissa's getting an overhaul of her office right now that's going to have the ability of more people to come in and witness and watch the tabulations and live in person, you know, and stuff. And then, you know, we want to make sure that we restore as much as possible the confidence in the elections in Cochise County. I mean, so that's why we're, we've asked you to come down here and give us some insight, and it's part of a bigger effort that the Board of Supervisors has, my colleagues and I, to try to improve election integrity and transparency in the county. So why don't you kick off?
And before I go any further, before I start into the presentation, I just want to say, I don't think anyone has shown more interest and courage in seeking election integrity than Cochise County. And no good deed goes unpunished, and I'm sure Mr. Crosby on the line could attest to that, but I consider what you have been trying to do for some time exactly what a lot of people in the public are looking for. They want more transparency and verifiability of their elections.
Sometimes it's the littlest issue, as Ms. Gomez can attest, that occurred in her election. The littlest issue will set off alarm bells all over the place. So she had an issue where she was left off the ballot in one precinct.
In some precincts.
I knew I was gonna win.
So there's all these little things that, you know, may seem like minor, but it's the totality that creates the problem and the perception. So, you know, with Melissa and Billy, he's on the, you know, signature verification ballot, mail-in return side, and that's a big, as you know, a big deal, right? And then, of course, the ability to have a lot of transparency in the way we process and count ballots. But getting the election ballot itself set, which was the issue.
Ballot styles, and making sure that you've got all of those correct.
Yeah, it's every little thing. So again, it's a, this is part of an effort between us, the County Recorder, and of course, our Elections Director, to improve that process. And of course, Ms. Gilman and Joe Casey, our Deputy County Administrator, immensely involved in this process as well. So we're trying to build and gather information. And again, we appreciate you coming down and getting us smarter on some aspects that we may, in the future, implement here in the county to allow the public more transparency.
And you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, small, small things, but small things can make a huge difference. Right, in my introduction, I mentioned I had to oversee the first recount, statewide recount of an election in Arizona in 2010. About 2 million voters voted in the election. One of the propositions was losing by 126 votes. Triggered the state statute that says you have to have a recount, less than 200. It's now a percentage, it's a much larger number now. But back then, it was the first time we had triggered a recount in the history of the state of Arizona. And I can remember when my Deputy Secretary, Jim Drake, who's now a Maricopa County Superior Court Judge, he came into my office and said, "Secretary Bennett, we're gonna have to do a recount of whatever it was, 201 or something." And it's losing by 126, and we're gonna have to call every county recorder, every county election director tomorrow morning, and say, "We're gonna have to recount 2 million ballots statewide." Now, I go, I'm an accounting major, and so I tried to go to sleep that night, and it occurred to me, if the second count of 2 million ballots is 99% accurate to the first, that could be off 20,000 ballots. If it's 99.9%, that's 2,000. If it's 99.99%, that's 200.
And that flips it.
And instead of losing by 126, maybe it wins by 74. And so I did not sleep that night, realizing that we could be 99.99% accurate from one count to the second count, and I might be the Secretary that has to stand up and say, "No, that didn't lose, it really passed." What? Well, over the next week or 10 days, we worked with all 15 counties to recount 2 million ballots. It changed by 42. Instead of losing by 126, it lost by 168. And we reviewed over 1,600 precincts in all 15 counties throughout the state to see how much change was there. In every precinct in the state, from the first count to the second count, 99.5% of the precincts had no change. Exactly the same count, first time to second time. There were some here, one change, or one changed, two. And then we hit precinct, I don't remember what number it was, in Maricopa County, changed by 30. Of the 42 vote change that occurred statewide, 30 of it accounted, was in one precinct in Maricopa County. So I called the Recorder and the Election Director of Maricopa County. Ladies, what happened to be ladies? And I said, "Something happened in Maple Precinct," or whatever it was. "Oh, well, we'll contact the election workers." And finally, after they were interviewing all the election workers, one guy finally said, "I think I know what happened." At about 11 o'clock, I looked behind the machine, and somebody hadn't set the door so that the ballots, as they fed through, went down into the hopper. The ballots were behind the machine, laying on the floor. And out of an abundance of caution, to make sure that those ballots got counted, we picked them up off the floor and ran them through again. Well, on Election Day, they double-counted those 30 ballots. They didn't make that same mistake a week later when they did the recount. So 30 of the 42 change in the whole state, if you excluded that 30 in that one precinct, the whole rest of the state changed by 12 votes out of 2 million. Now, that's an accuracy percentage of like 99.9994%. But we were dealing with something where the results of an election could have changed with .001% change. So little things matter, especially in the very close elections that we're having.
Well, in little counties, little things are big things, as it was the case with Ms. Gomez. Anyways, go ahead, Mr. Bennett.
Let's get started.
We have a hard stop at 11:00, so.
Okay, and I'll get moving here. I gotta turn this baby on, and then we'll, okay. This is our presentation. We kind of touched on the trust crisis, you know? Some people think their vote doesn't matter, it's a rigged game. I think you all have some of these. I think it was Mark Quain that once said, "If voting really made a difference, they wouldn't let us do it." Both sides are corrupt, and when that trust collapses, society destabilizes. In a recent poll, almost four out of 10 Democrats and over seven out of 10 Republicans do not trust the results of one of the last two presidential elections. So 72% of Republicans, 38% of Democrats, do not trust the results of one of the last two presidential elections. And we believe at Audit USA, the truth is like a lion. You don't have to defend it, you just let it loose, and it will defend itself. So we're going for transparency, and that's how we rebuild it. We want to go from a "trust us, we did it right," to "Let us show you that we did it right." Prove it. And that's a little quote that I said somewhere sometime. Okay, transparency, as John has told me a million times, is the currency of trust. And so quickly, let's go back to the origination of the state. Here's how an election occurred in 1912. The ballots were read aloud in each precinct. They were recorded on a paper document. The ballots were punched with a hole, and each ballot was fed through on a string. They actually had a string, and the ballots were just hanging there. And the citizens could come in and inspect the ballots and see for themselves that the information on these ballots adds up to the tally. That string was kind of the original public chain of custody. The public had total access, transparency, and responsibility for that. We have come up with a program, we call it ABE, it's called Auditable Ballot. What's the E for, John? Examination, thank you. So this is kind of the equivalent of the 1912 string. Auditable Ballot Examination, it's named after Abe, who believed very much in Abe Lincoln and transparency. He says, "I have faith in the people, they will not consent to disunion. The danger is that they are misled. Let them know the truth, and the country is safe." So what Abe does, it allows the county to verify by precinct that the ballot images match the CBRs. The CBR is the cast vote record, that's the tally sheets, big spreadsheet. We'll look at it here in a minute. On a separate computer, no connection to your election management system. We don't want anyone thinking that we're, you know, getting into the EMS system and doing anything there. But what we're trying to create is the idea that the citizenry can see the results of an election in a way that they can believe it again. So here are the five core principles. One is to verify and publish the list of your registered voters. In Arizona, 2009, the 84 election, we cut off. That's the domain of voters that are eligible to vote in an election. The only exception that I'm aware of is that our overseas military voters can register and vote right up until 7 o'clock on Election Day. But other than them, voters, we cut off 29 days before. Then you start doing mail-in ballots at 27, and on and on and on. Verify and publish the list of registered voters, including the inactive, because an inactive voter is still a registered voter. If they are inactive because their address changes, hasn't caught up with them because they've moved, you know, within the county, they're still a registered voter. Second, verify and publish the list of who voted. Now, this is already public information already. Yes, there are redactions for judges, law enforcement, people who are victims of domestic violence. I mean, there's some reasons within state law where you can have your name and address redacted.
So when you publish that record, you would put a black line over it? You would show that someone voted, but their name is protected.
In Arizona, I think we have about 8,000 name and address protected voters. I don't know what your numbers are in Cochise. Any idea?
Couple hundred.
Couple hundred. That's consistent, Yavapai told me that they have 300 or 400. So it's not a large, you have about 83,500 voters right now, I think?
Maybe not, active and inactive.
Okay, if you had inactive, you're right. So it's not a large list, but yes, you would just simply identify that there's a couple hundred voters that we redact their names and addresses, but they're eligible, and some of, many of them are gonna vote. And so you've got two lists. Here's the people eligible to participate in the election, and here's the people who voted. There shouldn't be anybody on the second list who wasn't on the first list.
There's no way anybody would know who's voted.
It's not how you voted, it's just the fact that you voted.
Because I know a lot of people think that somehow this image is gonna show whose name it is attached to that ballot.
No.
Is there a number or something that everybody gets? Like, I get like a 11,009, I don't even realize it, but that's my number on my ballot? Ballot style?
There's a ballot style that's based on what city council precinct you're in, what supervisor district you're in, and I'm in a fire district or a...
So the right candidates are on there.
So the right candidates are on your ballot.
Nobody would know that Kathleen, that's Kathleen Gomez's ballot. Because I think people think somehow that's what's gonna be up there.
And probably what leads to that supervisor is that the envelope that your ballot comes in has your name, address, and some identifying information, but that's not on your ballot. So as that is returned back to the county, the county can tell you, "Oh, we got Kathleen's ballot." What they're really saying is, "We got Kathleen's ballot envelope, and inside is an anonymous ballot."
That's what would be up there. Okay, got it. I just wanted to make sure people get it.
That's how they can tell people, yeah, "We got your ballot back. You dropped it in a box, or you mailed it, or you, whatever."
Mr. Chair, and Mr. Bennett, I have a further comment along what Ms. Gomez said with regard to privacy concerns and the cast vote record. And it has to do with, I believe Mr. Bennett mentioned, when I met him last, that there are some precincts that are so small that it can be inferred how a person voted or close to it. So is, and I believe that your fix for that problem was to add precincts together. So, and then if your plan gets delayed in court or defeated, we're kind of back to where we are now. So one, how about adding precincts together to address the privacy concerns of the CBR? And what if your plan gets delayed or defeated in court?
Okay, to the first point, very small precincts. I checked your precinct, you have 55 precincts, 89,000 voters. With your smallest precinct that I can find was San Simone, at 184 percent. Do you have something smaller than that?
We have one with zero.
Depending on different precincts on the city-state or elections, you could drill it down even further than that, and so that...
So do you have some ballot styles that are two of this one ballot style, or three?
There is a possibility, that's a possibility.
That situation can exist and does exist in other states and counties. And our solution, Supervisor Crosby, would be, for purposes of releasing this information, if you get to the point where you want to, and I think you should, release it publicly, that you combine the small precincts into at least a precinct, a kind of a temporary holding precinct size of at least 25. Colorado uses 50. They've got some counties that release ballot images and the cast vote record. So there's ways to combine some of those very small ballot styles where there's only two of this one. Your precinct sizes, I think, are okay. You don't have any precincts that aren't, you know, are just two people. But your ballot styles on precinct splits and things like that can get down to some very small numbers, and so we would just combine those into a...
Yeah, we have minimum number, but we have an opportunity, it's not anytime soon. Of course, we're gonna have to wait until the census, and when we, hopefully, Ms. Gomez, myself, will be back here in 2030, and we'll be able to fix that in 2030. I don't think there's a remedy before that, unfortunately, because of the way the statutes are written. And I look at the way my attorneys will probably tell me the same, that, you know, we, I don't want to look like California and say, "Oh, we're just gonna redraw all the lines just to redraw the lines." We're not doing that. I want to make sure the public knows that. In 2030, after the census, we will have an opportunity to redraw precincts, of course, supervisory districts and other jurisdictions within the county. And that will be a time where we will put that as part of the criteria, you know, work with both the Recorder and our Elections Director. I hope their Recorder's still here, too. And we will make that a priority as part of the redistricting process as we redraw, we draw the lines. But for now, we're stuck with what we're stuck with, so we'll have to be careful not to accidentally do something like that.
Right.
Okay, to conclude that, Mr. Chair, I understand the correction made by Ms. Avant and Mr. Bennett having to do more with ballot styles instead of precincts. So just to clarify that for anybody listening, that appears to be what the issue will be, is ballot styles, not precincts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the, what is this? Okay. So list of the registered voters, list of who voted, not how. We don't know how anybody voted. Third is, just verify that the number of ballots equal the number of voters. Pretty self-explanatory, but, and let's move quickly, since we have a hard ending time here. Fourth, and this is probably the most important, this is where this ABE program comes in. Verify that the ballot images match the cast vote record, the CBR. And we'll show you what a CBR looks like and how that can happen. The fifth kind of frosting-on-the-cake thing is, you could allow some random sample inspection within the county. You wouldn't do this by allowing the voters to come in and actually, but you could verify every 10th or every 20th ballot image through the actual paper ballots that you still have in your control. Just to verify and eliminate the possibility that there was any manipulation between the ballot images from the paper ballots that they were created from. So those are the five points. Here's what a CBR looks like, the cast vote record. It's basically a spreadsheet. On the left are the ballots, anonymous ballots, just by the number when they came in through the system. And then the columns across the CBR are the different choices they had in the races. So you can look at ballot number one, and this is from somewhere in Maryland, I think it is. You can see that they voted for these people in this race, and these people in this race. And so what you would do, and what ABE does, is it takes your ballot image file and your cast vote record, and it kind of connects them, so that a person could sit down and with two computer screens, as you kind of see in the bottom right corner. One person is looking at the cast vote record. ABE correlated the ballot image to their corresponding row on the cast vote record. One person could look at the ballot image and verify all of the races on that ballot. Okay, in this, did they vote for Evers and Rodriguez for Governor Lieutenant Governor? Yeah. Did they vote for Josh Call as Attorney General? Did they vote for, no, for Secretary? You can just go through, you can do it on everyone, you could do it on every 10th one, you could do it however you want to, to just verify that the votes on the ballots are correctly recorded in the cast vote record. Of course, the cast vote record then gives you a total for each of the candidates, and you can verify that total to your system. Well, so here's a, here's a side-by-side. On the bottom right is your election management system report showing that Cox and Shifarelli, this is Somerset County, Maryland. We've got counties all over the country that readily provide their ballot images and cast vote records, and so we got Somerset. And you can see that in their election management system, it said Cox and Shifarelli got 447. The ABE, which is a basically Microsoft Excel thing, gives you the same number. Those match, we're good. Total number of votes, you can see the grand total in the blue line under ABE is 815. We don't have it highlighted, but if you go a little bit higher on the EMS system, you see that the total ballots cast were 815. And what ABE does, again, it's just an Excel spreadsheet with some macros that we've created with some people who know how to do this. In this slide, you can see A, you tell the system where is the file for the ballot images? B, where do you want to save the results to? C, tell it where the file for the cast vote record is? And then you tell it to work. And in 52 seconds, for Somerset County, Maryland, it created 23 different precincts. This is one of the beauties of this. You've got vote centers, you've got ballots coming in by mail. They're all going into boxes, probably. If you tried, if you wanted to, try to recreate a... They're all going into boxes, probably. If you tried, if you wanted to, try to recreate a precinct to verify a precinct, you'd have to get in almost every box, find the ballots from all the different precincts. By correlating them digitally, you can create precinct by precinct holes or subholes. So that you can verify that
Okay.
the numbers of voters matched by precinct and the votes for the candidates matched by precinct.
Question real quick. So in that precinct fifty where the race was left off the ballot, they resent another ballot. But it wasn't notified on the outside envelope that this was not a duplicate.
Okay.
So when you tie this up, would you be able to see, okay, well, these guys got the new ballot in, but these who voted didn't vote for that race? That would be relevant.
Exactly.
And so then you could use that, say if I had lost or won by fifty, we would say, well, you would have to redo it. Because those people didn't get the right ballot. Well, I don't know. Now, I know that Lot didn't get it. So that's the trust issue, because I know that the ballot wasn't received by a majority of people because they already thought they had
And if your race had come within that margin of the number of ballots that were kind of messed up, you could have used the ballot images of both the original ballot and the supplemental ballot that was sent to the people who left it off to make sure that, okay, we had five hundred that were done right, but we forgot a hundred. And here's the seventy of the hundred that came back in, and there's no duplicates, and
You could really get a clear picture of who voted and if they had the right ballot.
And you can look at overvotes, you can look at undervotes, write-ins, ballot marking devices. Let me get to a So basically, you compared the ballot images to the cast vote record. Abe is allowing you to audit those things together. It's balancing and comparing to your E S N S reports. And when they match, the result is verified. Let's go to this next slide. This is an actual situation in Somerset County, Maryland, where a voter, they had nineteen races on, some of them were candidates running for certain offices, but they had a bunch of amendments to the Maryland Constitution. And instead of filling in the bubble, they circled, they circled the whole thing.
Oh, my God.
So this voter voted for thirteen of those races. But none of them would count it except that. When he circled that for the constitutional amendment, his circle line happened to go through the oval. And so it picked up some pixels of blackness in that oval. He only got credit for voting in that one. The other examples that are shown here, where he circled them, but none of his line went through the oval? Got nothing, got nothing.
But couldn't they have adjudicated that ballot?
Yes, and
We do.
And you do.
We do, yeah.
And so when somebody says, well, I don't see any marks in the ovals, well, we sent it to an adjudication table. They, Arizona is a voter intent state. It was obvious that he was circling all of these to express his intent, and they got it right. Instead of just crediting him for the one that the machine read, we picked up the other twelve.
So that would be, people could, people would be able
People would be able to see that we took care of that.
So your question, clarifying question, so your system, would they be able to use the adjudication ballot as well as the duplication ballot? So you could match this ballot to the duplication ballot?
It would separate it to the exact level you want to look at. Because we use Microsoft Pivot, and you could pivot the database and pick anything you want to look at and we'll put it there. All right, so basically you can do a precinct level audit. You could bring citizen volunteers in, pick a precinct that they're both from, different parties, sit two people down with a computer that only has Excel on it. And you can look, one person's looking at the ballot image, the other person's looking at the votes reported in the C V R. And you know everyone, or every tenth one, or whatever, and everybody knows that it was done right. So on the occasion, when people sign their actual ballot, how do you redact that out on your scanned images?
People sign their ballot?
Yeah, it's on time.
It's rare, but they do. And then that takes away their anonymity.
Or they could just make it in a way that you know that that person, some individual voter, so
I would leave that to the county, how you want to deal with that. But I believe the simplest way is to not do any redactions if you can avoid it. So then we have a voter education issue that if we're gonna do this, yeah, maybe the first or second time
The question for our legal team to take a look at.
Yeah, now, it's legal in Arizona under Arizona
Show your own ballot.
Take a picture of your ballot and post it on Facebook. So if voters understand that by identifying their ballot, they are identifying their ballot, then they're either, if they're okay with that, keep doing so, but if you're not, don't sign your ballot. But you might have a cycle or two where you have some volunteers quickly scan the ballot images and say, oh, yeah, here's Grandma Bennett signed her ballot.
If in a case like that, if somebody came in and signed their ballot and we got it on the early board, could the early board just reject the name, duplicate it in the system? So that it would show reduction, it would show ballot one, ballot two?
Correct. Again, we're not connecting anything to the servers on which the EMS system, election management system is because we don't want any questions of contamination one direction or the other. So the final vision is that, got to stay on, got to be able to verify ballots, or we're gonna end up with bullets.
Yeah.
And I'll finish with this, you know, when one side sees elections as fair and the other side sees them as rigged, and that's usually based on who won or who lost, we're no longer sharing a democratic republic. We're fighting over a broken scoreboard. And until we restore trust, which I think we can, and I think Cochise County would be a fabulous starting point in Arizona to begin a level of transparency, factability, and public verifiability. Now, in one of the meetings that we had individually, the question came, well, what does the Secretary of State's office think about this? Well, I called the Secretary of State, as a former one myself, and this was his exact quote. I described what I'd be presenting to you. And he says, you can tell them that you and I, Ken and Adrian Fontis, were both apostles for radical transparency.
And he sees this as radical?
No. He's willing to support radical transparency. This is radical, maybe compared to some?
Yeah.
I think in a few years, this is gonna be the standard. There are counties in the country, Bada County in Idaho that includes Boise, largest populated county in Idaho, Tarrant County in Texas, Somerset, Dane County in Wisconsin. The fourth-largest election jurisdiction in the country, Miami-Dade County, just announced that they are going to quit destroying ballot images. And they're going to release ballot images and the cast vote record.
So does this help with timing as far as getting that information out? It would be, it would, right? So that
Well, what we want to offer, Supervisor, is something that your election officials can use as a tool internally. So that they can be more confident that these procedures were checked and double-checked and triple-checked or whatever, that folks were allowed to come in, observers can look right over our shoulder, or maybe we want to help you prevent what happened in, with all due respect, Pinal County a couple of years ago. When the state Attorney General race had to be recounted and all the counties recounted, unfortunately, Pinal County came up with a five-hundred vote difference between the first county and the second county. And in a race where the margin of victory was only about four hundred, I think, three or four hundred, the Pinal County results changed by a hundred and thirty or, I mean, it was some significant number. If every county had had the, had made the mistake that Pinal County had made, that race could have flipped statewide, and we'd be looking at Attorney General, who was, Homade?
Yeah, Abe.
Instead of Chris Mace. And so we want to give you something that's not a catch you why, we're gonna give it to the public before you've used it, however much you want to use it. We want to give it to you, and the word give, we're a nonprofit organization, we're not trying to make money off this. There are some companies in the country that have similar, maybe better systems that, for example, Ada County in Idaho, Tarrant County, use a system called Survey or something. Where they pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to buy a system that releases the ballot images and the cast vote record on their public website, and anybody can look at it, and that, I think that's great. But what we're talking about for Cochise is giving you a tool that you can use on a separate computer. It's not part of your EMS system, and you can make sure that the results you release on a timely basis, I think it can help speed up that time, Mr. Chairman. But not probably significantly. I don't think it's gonna, I mean, it might help me find an error. If you're looking for a ballot, which box do I look in? No, let's just go to the Abe system, and there it is right there, and yeah, it matches.
Well, this last election that I was in, we had machines that weren't working properly. We had to have it, you know, replaced. There were sixteen thousand ballots that we retaliated that we didn't know about. So for me, it was like, did everything get counted? You know, I was unsure, right? And I had made the statement that if I was a supervisor and had to verify, I would have no issues with it because of all the things that happened in that process. This would be able to make me feel comfortable because I'd be able to see and it would match. Because we don't have anything like that, so we just have to take it on the processes working, which for like, for that two-week period, almost didn't work.
Well, like my earlier slide, trust us, it's right. Well, no, let's Yeah, so you're Let's look at it internally first. Make sure we've made as few mistakes as possible. We're not gonna eliminate mistakes from elections because humans are involved in elections, and humans make mistakes. But we can identify those mistakes, reduce them to the fewest number possible. And when we do give you a product to vote on in the board meeting to certify, you feel as comfortable about it as you possibly can.
The other thing, your point is making, you're gonna make available these computers. We could make available for a citizen to come in and say, I want to double-check
Precinct thirty-two.
Yeah, so they can come into Melissa's office, and there'll be two computers there. They could look at this screen and see the ballot image, they could look at this screen and see the cast vote record. So if there's a concern, the citizens could actually go do their own audit. And if they see something wrong, they can bring it to the elections director who can double-check it, or they can bring it to the board, and we could, you know, take another, another look at it or whatever.
And there's probably an explanation.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
There might be a difference. Oh, you were looking at the ballot image of the one that got replaced because we sent out a new one to precinct on it.
Right.
But I'm saying, it's a mechanism, because what occurred, as you mentioned, the last two elections that created this problem where people perceived there to be an issue. You can alleviate that concern by allowing them the opportunity to come in and check.
Yeah.
The public can come in, and they can look at these ballot images, they can look at the cast vote record, and they can verify that that is the tally based on the actual ballot itself. You know, so if there's a question, people can come in and look at it. So that helps, you know, and say, if somebody comes in and says, hey, we think you cheated on this precinct or this vote for this office was wrong, we say, okay, yeah, maybe you should go over to the elections department, and you'll have the access to the ballot image, you'll have the access, and why don't you conduct a citizens audit?
Right.
A citizens audit, and then if you see something different, then bring it to the election director's attention, and she will have her team review what you saw and either say, yes, there's an issue here, and then she'll figure out how to remedy it. Or she'll say, no, this is what you're looking at, and this is why this is, and give you a rational explanation for that.
Right.
And try to alleviate that concern.
So you have completely like, your recorder and your election director are Republicans. And so the other party says, well, you know, it's gonna go because they're Republican, you know, so of course it's gonna go Republican way. They could come in and make sure that that didn't happen.
Right, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I have some comments, Crosby?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Mr. Crosby.
Okay, yeah, it looks like we do have a little bit of time, and I appreciate that. So I wanted to point out that the foundational issue in state law, in case this plan gets delayed in court or defeated in court, and we're back to where we are now. Just in case that happens, to get back into the sixteen four four two B of the A R S, that is obviously state law, and it has promulgated federal law into state law. And so the E A C, the Election Assistance Commission, is the foundation of the issue. And so, like I said, in case this plan gets delayed or squashed in court and we're back to where we start, then we need to keep in mind things like revocation is not the same as expiration of V S T L accreditations and so on. And so we need to keep that in mind as the foundational issue. And so we don't want to be putting a Band-Aid on cancer, okay? And so I hope that Mr. Bennett's plan cures all the ills, but in case it does not, and we're back to where we are now, then we need to be taking a serious look at sixteen four four two B state law. And so there's a, did I say, revocation is not the same as expiration? And so quorum provisions having to do with the Election Assistance Commission do not relate to non-compliance with timelines and expires means expires. I guess that concludes my comments. Thank you very much. And by the way, I believe that Ms. Lowenheim is going to post what, another one of my document dumps for everybody's benefit. And I hope that my colleagues will take a look at that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
I can address his concerns. I think sixteen four forty-two B refers to part of the process that happens at the statewide level for the verification and certification of machines.
Right.
Which have been done at the federal, supposed to have been done at the federal level first. Lots of issues and questions about whether that process really adds value to the whole thing. I mean Volkswagen proved ten years ago that you can program the exhaust system of a car to work just right and fine when it's in test mode, sitting in the vehicle testing bay. But then when you drive it out and go into regular mode, it's polluting ten times more than it really is. So this helps to address a myriad, doesn't solve all the issues. This has nothing to do with the equipment verification and certification. But transparency even helps address that. Because if you can show people that, yes, you might have questions about whether the federal and/or state certification of equipment, election equipment machines is as good as it could be or not, but here's the ballot images and the cast vote record, and they match.
Yeah, that's excellent, and I hope that my colleagues will agree that we need to recruit other counties into this plan.
Yep.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Somebody's gotta be first.
Why not you?
Yeah, so, okay. Well, we got like ten minutes. I don't know if anybody wants to wrap up anything with Mr. Bennett, or do you want to add anything, sir?
Have you gotten any kind of, well, so Fontis supports this. He thinks this is a good thing. Have you had any feedback from the other parties in the state, like even libertarians or, you know?
We haven't presented this to the parties yet. We thought it was most important and appropriate to present it to counties and election officials that really run elections.
Yeah, exactly.
I think kind of back to that first slide of, you know, more than seventy percent of Republicans and almost forty percent of Democrats don't trust one of the last two, and you know which ones they are.
Yeah.
I mean, the Republicans loved the results of the twenty twenty-four election because their person won. They went bananas in twenty twenty when Trump lost. I guess one thing, let's take that twenty twenty election where some of this kind of really got started. And this is where I got to know Mr. Break so well. We were asked to be kind of the liaisons for the Senate at the Maricopa County Audit. But let's go back to the statewide election of twenty twenty. Biden, the results said, won by a little over ten thousand votes out of three-point-four million. And you get into those numbers and people don't, they have a hard time understanding. Bring it down to some numbers that they can't understand. If Arizona was a thousand voters, I called it my Shire talk back then, because that's what a Shire is. Back in England, Old England, a thousand people lived in a community, they called it Shire, Devonshire, Yorkshire. That's what a Shire was, was. So what's the Arizona Shire story? In twenty twenty, if Arizona was a thousand voters, the actual voter turnout was eighty percent. So eight hundred of those thousand voters in Arizona vote. Want to know how close the election was? Biden got four oh one, Trump got three ninety nine. Two votes out of eight hundred. Now, think if you were the governing board of a, I don't know, a homeowners association, and there was some contentious something that had to be decided, and you had a thousand homeowners in your homeowners association. What would you do? Well, you'd have an election. The first thing you do is you'd make sure that we have an agreed-on list on who's the thousand people that get to vote in this election. That was our step number one. Publish the list of who's registered voters. Second thing you would do is you would record those people on some type of a sign-in sheet when they came in to vote. And there's eight hundred, eight hundred of the thousand voted. Then you would make sure, third thing you do is you'd make sure that you have eight hundred ballots to go with the eight hundred people who voted. And then if it was as close as four oh one to three ninety nine, or one mistake might have meant, no, it tied. Or two, it really went the other way. What would you do? You would come up with some system to let people say, here's the tally sheet of when we recorded the votes, and here's the ballots, and let's look at them. Let's count them two or three more times. Let's do whatever you got to do to convince the thousand people that it was really four oh one to three ninety nine. And that's what we're offering you. A tool to do.
I I, again, I I appreciate you coming down. This is, this is good stuff. And as as we move the ball forward on transparency, I hope, I hope people understand is there, there's nothing here that isn't technically already public information. All right, so this is, this is stuff that if somebody does a public records request, or somebody wants that, they're able to to have access to this data. And so making it or publishing it or providing it online is not a big, a big step. And it allows private citizens, should they desire, to verify outcomes. They can do their own little citizen evaluation, citizen audit. And if they think there's a genuine concern, again, they can bring it to the attention of the elections department and eventually the board, and then we could, we could go from there. Um, but it could, and we've seen that here in meetings where, uh, you know, uh, three of us are sitting up there on the board, and a citizen comes up and brings up a point that we didn't even think of, you know? And and it happens, you know, we, we are human, and we can't remember everything. I don't have a lock trap memory, and sometimes I miss stuff. And sometimes, you know, it's nice to have a member of the public come and say, hey, Mr. Chair, Abe Board, Board Member Gomez, you know, you have to look at this, or you, you know, mention that. And then we, we've done it. We go back and we take a, we take a look at it. So it's another tool, and I think it's a valuable transparency tool to allow the public to uh uh allow that check and balance, which is what the system.
Right, it's timing, so it's not like they have to wait a long period, so then that gives a level of, well, what are they doing? It's just, it's continuously there.
The one thing we haven't talked about is cost.
Okay.
You'll probably have to buy about a two thousand dollar computer, keep it separate from your EMS system. You're going to need, what, hundred and, or sixty eight gigabytes of RAM and.
Yeah, that's what you want.
That's, that's it?
That's nothing.
That's it.
Well, um, I've got about, how many voted in the last presidential election, sixty thousand-ish? Yeah. Abe could take your ballot image file of sixty thousand ballot images and your cast vote record and correlate it probably in about uh eight or nine minutes.
It would create all the precincts, fifty five of them.
And you would suddenly have everything in a precinct subtotal. Whereas now, if you wanted to try to create a precinct that somebody come in and do a citizen audit on, you got to get into it forever, ever.
So so again, this is, this is something that we could do uh for the twenty twenty six election on a trial, as a trials. We won't have any official uh force of law or anything like that. It's just to to run a test to see and try this out and 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 experiment with it. And we'll, we'll take a look at what it would take. Of course, we'll get with our county administrator and our elections director on how that process would occur. But I mean, it's something, it's something to take a serious look at, and then we, you know, let people know we're just going to, going to give it a trial run. And then after twenty thirty, you know, if we're still here, we could look at redrawing the lines to make sure we don't accidentally expose inadvertently someone's vote and whatnot, and making sure that's a secure file, and then we could implement it uh on a full county-wide basis. So initially, we might have to be careful. And again, that's what we'll get with Melissa, and we'll see how, how we allow that uh correlation to occur so that we're not exposing someone's vote.
Yeah, I could, I could see your precinct sizes on your website. I couldn't get into ballot style.
We may, initially, what I'm getting at is we may just take a certain number and say, okay, we're going to do a trial run with a certain number. That number is so large that we can make sure that it's not going to allow someone to ascertain someone's vote. And then as we fix the issue with the 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 precincts, then we could, we could implement it fully.
Absolutely.
And then, and then, so basically, for the twenty thirty two election, it'd be fully implemented.
Mr. Chair, have further comment?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm looking at this article that came out about Mr. Senator Kavanaugh's recent bill, and it has a quote from a, the, uh, Callie Jones, who is uh the uh Mr. Fontis' Public Information Officer, and she's talking about stoking conspiracy theories about our elections and officials, elected officials going to spread misinformation, disinformation about election results. They should face legal consequences and uh and and so on, and so.
But she was going to punish free speech.
Yeah, okay, so, so this is, this is our, our current Secretary of State's still uh viewpoint is that it is, I guess he does not think that it's his responsibility to make sure that the state of Arizona complies with sixteen four four two B. So I wonder, Mr. Bennett, as a former Secretary of State, is it the state Secretary of State's responsibility to make sure that as critical infrastructure, the state Secretary of State confirms everything claimed by the EAC?
Yeah.
Or do we just believe whatever they say?
My answer is that it's the responsibility of the Secretary of State of this state to confirm that, not just assume uh or explain it off with some of the stuff you're reading. I spoke with the Secretary directly about what I was going to be talking to Cochise County about today.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. I appreciate those comments very much.
And he read, and I read you his verbatim quote, tell them we are both apostles for radical transparency.
Yeah, and again, this isn't, this is just making information available to the public.
Just transparent.
It's not deciding one way or the other, or pushing one agenda or one conspiracy theory. This is just like, here it is, here's the data, it's available, you can compare it, you could look at it, and that's, that's basically what we're, we're.
And as I said, there's other places that do this, how many?
Right.
Okay, well, we still have this conflict with the Secretary of State. According to Callie Jones' press aide, she said, tabulation machines are certified as required under both state and federal law. Well, uh, prove it. I don't see anybody proving it.
All right, we got to, we got to cut it, cut it short here. Well, we're not cutting short, we're out of time. And again, I want to thank Secretary Bennett, Mr. Bennett for coming in.
My pleasure.
And Mr. Break.
I'm honored to have your time and.
Yeah.
And.
And so we were, we will start talking about it, and then we could, I mean, I guess we do votes on this.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, well, we got work to do. Uh, with with our team here to put this into some kind of a process. We have to write this process up, and then we'll be getting back with you guys as well to start how to.
Come down and share it with your uh election folks, and they can see how it works. We could run some trial runs behind the scenes on last month's election or whatever you got.
And so I got, we got a meeting with a lawyer, and they charged by the minute.
Oh.
So so let me um, let me end it there. Uh, our, our, our next meeting is now. Uh, we are going to do a possible executive session uh to discuss legal counsel regarding a notice of claim by Mr. Crosby. So that's going to be.
Crosby is leaving at this.
All right, all right, sir. All right, so we're going to go do that. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you again.